I'm glad the Transportation Committee is still needed, which may help to explain three people, but I need four. Mr. Fuhr is here. I only strike three for a quorum. Quorum. Council meeting please come to order. Good morning. This is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on February 6, 2001. The council has 15 members while 14 in a vacant seat at the moment. We meet on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at approximately 10 o'clock. It is now 10:25. We are being viewed on Channel 35 and available on council phone, and this being the first meeting of the first Tuesday meeting of the month, we are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, they ought to call a roll first. Good idea.
President Chick, Fuhr, Glanter, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Cowsy, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, French, Black, Walters, Faro, 10 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. So, since we do have a quorum, would everybody please stand for the pledge? And Mr. Savornich, would you like to lead us?
Thank you, Madam President. Would you please place your right hand over your heart and proudly say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Please be seated, and we're going to hear next for our invocation from Sister Nuala Ryan, who has had a very interesting time watching us assemble here this morning. Sister.
Good morning to the God in each of us and to all our brothers and sisters in the city of the angels. God, we welcome you into the presence of this council meeting. Let us pray. I bow to the sacred in all creation. May my spirit fill the world with beauty and wonder. May my mind seek truth with humility and openness. May my heart forgive without limits. May my love for friend, enemy, and outcast be without measure. May my needs be few, my living simple. May my actions bear witness to the suffering of others. May my hands never harm a living being. May my steps stay on the journey of justice. May my tongue speak for those who are poor without fear of the powerful. May my prayers rise with patient discontent until no child is hungry. May my life's work be a passion for peace and nonviolence. May my soul rejoice in the present moment. May my imagination overcome death and despair with new possibility. And may I risk reputation, comfort, and security to bring this hope for all our brothers and sisters in this city of the angels. May you act justly, love tenderly, and walk humbly with our God. Amen.
Thank you, Sister. All right. Let's go through the agenda first.
Before starting the regular items, there are a few matters to be received if I want to continue. Items number 22 and 24, requests from Los Angeles Housing Department and the council offices. If these matters offices that these matters be received and filed. 22, 23, and 24.
Without objection? Any objection, members of the council? Those are received and filed.
Item number 32, a request from the city attorney to have items 32A and B continued one day until February 7th.
Without objection, we'll continue 32A and B.
32G, a request from the city attorney to have this matter withdrawn from the agenda and referred to the city attorney's office. 32G.
All right. Without objection, 32G is referred back.
Item number 34, a request from Council District 6 that this matter be continued till April 6th.
Any objection to that? All right. Without objection, item 34 is continued.
On the regular agenda, items number 1 through 3 are items for which public hearings have been noticed.
Have been noticed, yes. We have cards on both 1 and 3. So let's call those special and see what else we've got here.
Then item number 2 is before you.
All right. So item number 2, members of the council, any?
A motion is required from the floor. I believe that's in Councilmember Pacheco's district.
Mr. Pacheco.
As that we find that the permit and the applicant satisfy the public necessity, public convenience, necessity requirements under state law, and move approval for item number 2.
All right. Members of the council, you've heard the motion. Anybody else? Open the roll. Close the roll on Mr. Pacheco's motion. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. All right. That's approved.
There's a request that item number 51 be sent to the city attorney's office.
Is there any objection to referring item 51? Seeing none, item 51 is referred to the city attorney's office.
Items numbers 4 through 17 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number 16, a motion is required.
All right. We do not have cards on any of those unless you're about to hand me one. Okay. Members of the council, any specials 4 through, sorry, 17?
4 through 17. 16 requires a motion.
We need the motion, yes. But let's get, all right. Mr. Fuhrer moves 16A. Any specials? Seeing no specials, open the roll on items 4 through 17 with 16. I'm sorry. Mr. Pacheco.
13 be referred to the council district office.
All right. If there's no objection, item 13 will be referred to Mr. Pacheco's office. So, anybody else? Okay. Items 4 through 12, 14 through 17, 16, it's 16A. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Item 4 is an ordinance, so that?
Goes over one week.
Goes over one week.
To February 13th for a second reading.
Okay. 37. Okay. Hold on. Okay. What do we have next here?
Items number 18 through 31, with the exception of 22, 23, and 24, which have been acted on. Those are items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right. We have cards on, no, we don't have cards on any of those. Actually, I have a question on item 27, so can we call that special? All right. Ms. Walters calls 28C special.
And refer item 30 to Arts Health and Humanities Committee.
All right. Is there any objection to referring item? Ms. Walters, Mr. Burnson wants to know why you want to refer it.
What if this has got to do with arts? This is tobacco money.
It has to do with health.
Okay.
All right. Without objection, and you'll have that back sometime soon.
Come back soon so we can get some of this money to work.
I think you're both on the same side here. Okay. Item was, that was 30, right?
Item number 30.
Is referred to Arts Health and Humanities. Item 28C is, I've lost that. What'd we do with 28C?
Okay. 28C is special by Councilmember Walters.
It's called special, okay. All right. So that leaves?
18 through 21, 25, 26.
29.
27A through B.
No, 27, I called special.
28A through B.
I'm sorry. 28A and B.
29 and 31.
All right. Any other specials? Seeing none, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Are we there?
11 ayes.
Thank you. Those are approved.
On the continuation agenda, item number 33 is an item notice for public hearing.
I don't believe we have any cards on item. Let's just double check here. Hold on. No, we do not have any cards on item 33. All right. In that case, the public hearing is closed, members of the council, item 33.
I have an amending motion, Madam President.
Push the button. All right. Ms. Chick. Oh, that's all. Just you have an amending motion? All right. Let's take note of the amending motion. Laura, maybe you should just describe what the amendment is. Well, just describe it. We can do it right now.
It's for a childcare facility on Fallbrook Avenue, and the amending motions modify the conditions so that some trees can be saved.
Okay. Anybody have any further comment? In that case, Ms. Chick moves, I've already lost what number we're on here. Item 33 as amended. Open the roll on 33 as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. Next.
Items number 35 through 41 on the continuation agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right. We do have some cards on 37. I'm sorry. What was the last number you gave me?
41.
41. All right. We have cards on 37. But a hearing has already been held, so unless somebody moves to hold an additional hearing. And the person who's here is in support of the proposal. If I don't hear a motion, we are not going to hold an additional hearing. Open the roll on items?
35 through 41.
Mr. Fuhrer calls 35 special.
Madam Chair, on item 37, there was a circulating motion that I just wanted to make sure was part of the amendment.
I don't have it.
That's what, and I see the clerk holding on to it, so I don't, or the CLA's office. They're circulating it right now. But we had a reduction of 244,000, something like that, in regards to the overall block rent, and so this just makes an adjustment for that purpose.
All right. So you will move then 37 as amended?
As amended.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Open the roll on?
Okay.
Yes. Let's just hold 37 then. And let's vote on 36 through 41. Do we have any other specials? Okay. Open the roll on 36, 38 through 41. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Those are approved.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I ask for a reconsideration on item 40 for the purpose of voting no?
Yes. Actually, don't need to do that. We'll just record you as a no. It doesn't change the outcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Record. You got that. All right. We up to 42?
Okay. Items number 42 through 51 on the continuation agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right. Now, on item 42, Ms. Misakowski? Okay. Please take note that she's out of the room. She has to recuse herself on this one. We have one person, Julie Inouye. Step right up. And you're in favor, right? Okay. That's about all you need to say.
Okay. We're in favor.
All right. Thank you.
Can I give a brief history of it?
Sure. Go right ahead.
All right. Honorable Madam President, honorable council members, my name is Julie Inouye. I'm co-founder of the Vista Del Mar Neighbors Association, an active neighborhood watch community group in the village of Playa del Rey. The history of the Biona Wetlands easement resolution began in 1990 during the penancy of the lawsuit between the Friends of Biona Wetlands and Playa Vista, a resolution of prescriptive easements claimed by the Vista Del Mar Neighbors homeowners along the western borders of the wetlands north of Culver Boulevard. It was required to complete the settlement of the lawsuit and to commence Biona Wetlands' Dune Restoration. Our community was a supporter of this wetland restoration and thus was asked to facilitate in this negotiation. In May of 1991, the Vista Del Mar Neighbors Association negotiated a settlement by which the homeowners' easement claims were settled in return for a grant of a uniform restricted easement. As a result of the settlement, Playa Vista has agreed to underground utilities along the adjacent area of Vista Del Mar and a portion of Esplanade. The street lighting issue now before the council is a direct result of the undergrounding project, in fact, is a step, is a last step except for the street repaving. The new lighting will replace existing utility pole lights, which must be removed along the all above ground, along the utility wires. Ironically, Playa Vista had opposed paying for the lighting, but has reluctantly agreed to do so in order to complete this project. Obviously, the community is in support of this final step as it is necessary to complete the settlement. At this time, I'd like to thank all the Los Angeles city agencies who've done an outstanding job in executing this unique project with the leadership of Honorable Councilmember Ruth Galaner and her staff. I thank you all for your time and support of this community project.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and we are, I believe, ready to vote. Open the roll on item 42. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Just 42.
Just 42.
10 ayes.
Thank you. That's approved.
And the ordinance will go over?
The ordinance goes over one week, but the first part is approved. And we need to do forthwith on item 10 and item 17. And we are? Okay. Let's take these one at a time, and we'll get to that.
The next grouping is 43 through 50.
All right. But, Ms. Walters wants to continue item 44. Is that correct?
One week. The city, the CLA's report is just being distributed. And I think council members want to look at that.
That would be February 13th.
Hang on. All right. So we're going to, is there any objection to continuing item 44?
Well, a question on item 44. Maybe the CLA can help us. Is there a timeliness and urgency concern on item 44? Okay.
Okay. All right. So item 44 is continued one week. That's the 13th.
Madam President, for items 45, I move both 45A and B, the amendment.
All right. Now, we do have a card on item 45, so we're going to have to hold that, call that special for a moment. So item 43, Mr. Savornich, you had another item? Okay. Let's call item 47 special for an amendment. That leaves, and 45, because we have somebody who wants to be heard, that leaves 43, 46, 48, 49, and 50. Any other specials? Hearing none, open the roll on those. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right. Those are approved. Forthwith on, I hear a voice, 50. Thank you. Okay. Next.
Brings you back to item number 1, called special. There is a member of the public wishes to be heard.
This is certainly true. There are a number of members of the public who wish to be heard. All right. We have, hold on while I count them. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. We have 10 people who wish to be heard. So I'm going to open the public here, and I'm just going to call you in the order in which I have these cards in front of me. And remembering that there are 10 of you, ask you to be as concise as you can, and if you're coming after somebody who's already said what you want to say, "me too" is an acceptable response. Candace Whalen, followed by Emmylou Ayers, Leslie Lombard. I'll read you some more after that. Would you come over to this one? Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Candace Whalen. I live at 284 South Muirfield, and this is the first time I've spoken before the city council, so please bear with my nervousness. During the previous hearings on this matter, we've heard several arguments in favor of this parking lot. Many of us have been surprised by these arguments because we think that the parking lot is not a good thing. It's not consistent with the land use in Hancock Park. But apparently, these arguments have been persuasive, or we wouldn't be here now. So I'd like to comment on them. It's a little bit difficult to do rebuttal before you've actually heard the arguments, but that's where I come in the sequence. We've heard repeatedly that Marlboro School is the white knight who, by building a lovely parking lot, is rescuing the neighborhood from a longstanding eyesore. Now, this property has certainly been unattractive for years, but as long as its owner was not interested in selling or fixing the home, there was nothing anyone could do about it. When the property did go on the market, there were many potential buyers, but the school and its friends, speculating that they could obtain the variances necessary to build a parking lot, chose to offer a remarkably high bid. We've also heard that there is now no possible use for this lot other than parking, that this lot is in such a bad location that no one would buy it for a residence at all, or, in a contradictory statement, that any buyer who is now willing to purchase the lot for as much as Marlboro paid for it, would surely construct an enormous mansion or perhaps a halfway house. The absurdity of these arguments is self-evident. We all know that zoning and use ordinances limit the size of a house that may be built and restrict what it can be used for. We also know that any lot will sell at the right price, and that it would be entirely inappropriate for the city of Los Angeles to grant a land use change just so that a private institution won't risk having to sell a piece of real estate for less than it paid for it. This hearing is not about white knights or the cost of real estate. It's about parking. Specifically, it's about how much parking the school says it needs, how much the city of Los Angeles says it needs, and how much it already has. The numbers in this regard are ambiguous. By some accounts, the school has already, already has as much parking as the city requires. By other accounts, it needs something like 11 additional spaces, far less than the 44 spaces that are planned for this lot. If indeed additional parking is required, why not consider an alternative that no one objects to, that is, less restrictive parking on Rossmore? You have received copies of petitions signed by many Rossmore residents requesting this very change in order to reduce traffic speed on their street. The homeowners association has also been advocating this change for the same reason. A solution in which everyone wins is to provide for the small number of additional parking spaces that may be required by granting the request of the Rossmore residents for less restrictive parking on their street, and thus protecting the single-family character of the neighborhood by maintaining the current land use on the lot in question.
Thank you. Emmylou Ayers, followed by Leslie Lombard. Actually, it seems like everybody's on the same side here, so, go ahead.
Yes, I think we are. My name is Emmylou Ayers, and I live at 284 South.
Can you pull the microphone up close to your mouth? There you go. Thanks.
I live just to the west of this piece of property that's in question, and have been at all meetings from the very beginning. The meetings at the school when they were first proposing this, the meetings at the city hall, and even private meetings with Barbara Wagner in our backyard to gain support for the school. And Barbara would come and say, "What can we do to get you to come along with ours?" And we just said, "Don't build a parking lot." Would you want a parking lot in your backyard with the noise from cars and the idling, the fumes when they're idling, waiting to get out into traffic? It's not only an inconvenience to us and lowering the value of our property. All the reasons that you will hear for not doing this. It will. You'll hear it from the homeowners association and others, and it changes the nature of Hancock Park, and a precedent will be set that will be a difficult one to. Park, and a precedent will be set that will be a difficult one to combat. In spite of the fact that Ms. Wagner came to us a number of times to see what we would take for supporting the school's position, we were too strong, in our opinion, of what ramifications the action would have on the neighborhood in general, to simply sell out and abandon our principles. We offered to have a dialogue with the school officials to try and reach some sort of a compromise, but it seems they couldn't not see that there might be any solutions but theirs. I appreciate the school's position of having to find some additional parking to fulfill their requirements for the permit for the Arden Project. I also appreciate the community's desire to rid itself of the house that is an eyesore. I think that there is a solution to this problem. No one will be totally satisfied, because that's what compromise is about, but I think it can be a solution that everyone could live with. The school is obliged to have one hundred and thirty-four parking spaces at the end of Phase Three of the Arden Project. At the end of Phase Two, the school has complied with the requirements of one hundred and twenty-three spaces on site. There may be as many as one hundred and thirty-five to one hundred and forty. To be fair, let's take the one hundred and twenty-three spaces that they already have confirmed as being available right now. That leaves the need for only eleven more spaces required to conform with their use permit. If the school only needs eleven more spaces, why build a lot for four times that many? Why not build a garage that looks like a house from the street? It could have the fifty-foot setback that the Homeowners Association wants without a wall around it. It could be landscaped with lawns and shrubbery, and the wall that they had originally planned to go around the entire property could start at the front edge of the house, go west on Rossmore, around Third Street, to the wall that is, that exists there. It would keep the appearance of Hancock Park as it is, which is what most of us are really looking for.
Thank you. Can I ask you to wind up? I do have eight more people who want to be heard. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next is Leslie Lombard, and then Michael McMonigal now is one of you. Seems to be the attorney and the other one, or the architect and the other one the client. Maybe you can combine here. Go ahead.
Yes. I'm Leslie Lombard, and I'm here on behalf of Urban Concepts. We're representing the appellant in this case, Margaret and Michael McMonigal, who are neighbors of the abutting subject parking lot. We are appealing the findings which were made in the CUP for the parking facility. We believe that the parking lot use is not in character with the single-family residential uses on the block, and the making, and that making the findings to support the parking lot would be inappropriate. Additionally, we are appealing conditions fifteen and sixteen in the PAD case, which raises the threshold for the required valet service for special events at the school from two hundred and fifty to three hundred and forty patrons. This change appears to represent an intent to utilize the new parking facility for special events at the school. Our clients are opposed to the use of this parking lot for special events during the late evening hours and weekends. Moreover, in the event that our appeal is denied, we would like a commitment from Marlboro that the parking lot will not be used for late evening special events, and that future actions will not be attempted for further expansion into the residential neighborhood west of Rossmore. However, we are here today to ask that the council to grant the appeal to deny the use of this site for a parking lot, and instead direct the Department of Transportation to allow AM peak period parking along the west side of Rossmore, which would provide the school with the additional parking required. This alternative was to serve two purposes. First, Marlboro would have the parking necessary to support their activities, and second, the added parking will have a traffic calming effect within the surrounding community, which would be a win-win for both sides. The solution is outlined in our Section Four in our briefing book, which was provided to the council members. Again, we ask that you grant our appeal.
Thank you. Mr. McMonigal?
I'm sorry, McMonigal. Thank you very much. My name is Michael McMonigal. I wanted to make a brief statement regarding this, my appeal of the City Planning Commission decision to grant a conditional use permit for the property at two fifty South Rossmore. This property adjoins my home. The conditional use permit will permit construction of a forty-four car parking lot on the subject property. We have opposed the decision of the City Planning Commission for several reasons. Briefly, it is, first of all, a radical change in the character of Hancock Park, which is a historic residential neighborhood of single-family homes. Second, it is unclear how much additional off-campus parking the Marlboro School still truly needs. Three, traffic problems at the corner of Third and Rossmore, which are already problematic, will be worsened by the addition of more parking very close to that intersection. And four, I believe very strongly that there are other alternatives for the subject property besides the demolition and installation of a parking lot. And I was going to introduce Ms. Lombard, who of course preceded me, so I don't need to do that. But thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you. Eugene Prowazor, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, followed by Michael Cornwell, Suzanne Chase, and then we'll get back into this. Go ahead.
My name is Prowazor. I'm a city employee. I'm appearing on my own time. My daughter is a student at Marlboro. She's a senior, but that is not why I'm here. Some of you heard me say this before. I am a resident of the area at three-two-six Lucerne. Previously, I wrote the first environmental impact report for the state, in the state of California after the Friends of Mammoth decision on behalf of the city of Los Angeles. And thereafter, part of my job responsibilities from the Department of Public Works were to be attached to the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office and advise them on all environmental matters involving city purchase, sale, or leasing of real estate. And I did that for twenty-three months until the SEQA came into effect in California. I've been a participant in all the hearings here. I am not immediately impacted by this, and I want to make that clear, but I live in an adjacent area. Given the council decisions of last year, based upon the previous planning commission decisions and ZA hearings, which required the additional parking, given the fact that the architectural renderings supplied to the Plum Committee for the city council and to the zoning commission, and in hearings by Mr. Kawashima...
Hang on one second. There's a lot of background noise up here. Can you guys move your conversations somewhere over in the corner? Go ahead. Sorry.
I am in favor of allowing the parking lot to go through, unless you want to go back and change the entire thing that the city council did last year and the previous stuff did. And that's why I'm talking, I am not being compensated.
Okay. Thank you. Michael Cornwell, followed by Suzanne Chase.
Thank you, Madam President and council members. I appear to support Marlboro School in the request for a parking facility at the lot in question. This Arden Project for Marlboro has been going on, well, Barbara Wagner, the head of school, I just learned, has been head of Marlboro for eleven years, and we were working on this total project prior to Barbara's taking that position. With her arrival, the whole attitude towards the community improved. The school has been working very closely with the community. I could go into details. There'd been a very adequate public hearing before the hearing officer. He recommended this. The Plum, the, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve it. Plum Committee voted unanimously to approve it. In terms of the valet parking issue raised by Mrs. Lombard, that was aired adequately at the previous hearings, and we support the position taken by the, by the Plum Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Chase, followed by Marguerite Byrne, Mark Armbruster, and James Mullis, if I'm reading it right, and that finishes the crew. Ms. Chase.
Suzanne Chase. As a nearby resident, I am fully in support of Marlboro's using the corner for parking. I heard a couple of buzzwords at previous meetings, one of which was congestion. The congestion, which is now on the east side of Rossmore, will simply move to the west side. It doesn't add congestion. And the second was someone from the zoning board said, "Well, what about interfering with pedestrians? Any of us who live in the neighborhood know that..." I won't say there are no pedestrians on Third Street in that area, but virtually, none. So we have not a problem with the two important buzzwords. And I might add that it is a corner, undeniably, a problem. It's on two busy streets with a bus stop in front, and anyone who wants to look what people do on two busy streets need to just go down Rossmore, to Rossmore and Sixth, and look at the height of the hedges that those people have put up to protect their property.
Thank you. Marguerite Byrne.
Thank you. I live at one sixteen North Las Palmas Avenue, and I'm a member, longtime member of the Board of Directors of the Hancock Park Homeowners Association, whom I'm representing right now. Our association is a homeowners volunteer association of twelve hundred R1 homes in the middle of the city of Los Angeles. I'm sure most of you know what Hancock Park is. It's a beautiful area, thanks to the people who have bought the houses there. Thank the Lord for the movie people and the young people who appreciate historic residences, who spend a lot of money to maintain those residences. Our association board is very much against having a parking lot on Rossmore on the west side, where it will be the only parking lot in the whole twelve hundred homeowner association area. It does not mean we're against Marlboro. We have very good associations with Marlboro. We have many of our meetings there. We have supported Marlboro in everything that they do, with the exception of this parking lot. As you know, they had a huge plan, which, as Mike and other people have talked about, that was, enabled them to enlarge their school in a very big way. They tore down thirteen, at least, I may be corrected, and it's fine, R1 homes in order to make their field. It was a big thing. It went well, and we were, we were happy that Marlboro can stay in that location. They needed that. This parking lot is a very different situation. The parking lot has a house on it, or will soon not have a house on it. It's very dilapidated. We also feel this corner is a very important corner. Yes, every corner in Hancock Park, we are a very urban area. Every corner is fragile. We have Third and Highland with a house being used as a house of worship there, which is an illegal use. We have now Third and Rossmore, where we're going to have a parking lot. I know what I say will not affect your judgment because it's already been decided. Our councilman, who has worked with us very closely, has chosen not to support the board in this, so I know it's going to go through, but these things have to be said. Every corner is a busy corner in Hancock Park. We are boarded, we have Wilshire, Sixth Street, Third Street, Beverly, and Melrose. To say, because we have one dilapidated house on a corner, that that corner needs to be changed to a parking lot, I think is very short-sighted. We have been very good neighbors to Marlboro, and Marlboro has been good neighbors to us. Residents who live on Rossmore, I thought the, we've suggested, and we want to push this, that the girls do park on the street, and nobody cares, and they like it. If we have the parking restrictions lifted, that means they can use all of Rossmore at every hour to park, which would be a very good idea. They also park on Muirfield, and you've heard from some Muirfield residents. Those Muirfield residents have never complained about the girls parking there because they feel they want to be good neighbors. So we want Marlboro now to also be a good neighbor. This may seem like a very insignificant thing to you and our councilperson. It is not insignificant. A parking lot, no matter how beautiful it is, is not the same as an R1 residence, and we are committed to that. We are all volunteers. We spend enormous amounts of time. Mr. Hernandez knows about the HPOZs in your area. We're going for that. We're developing a committee. We're spending huge numbers of time, energy, and money to do this. And we would like the city and the city council to support our areas in these things. I don't want to get beyond the parking issue and talk about other things.
No, please don't.
I do believe that in being good neighbors, we know this is going to go through. We hope that Marlboro, we have a lot of solutions. I think they're going to have to bite the bullet, and they're going to have to put underground parking on their property, which is east of the east side of Rossmore. It makes sense. They have a feel to do it there now. It just is a matter of money. So we appreciate their being good neighbors. We hope they appreciate us being good neighbors, but we definitely, our association cannot support this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mark Armbruster, followed by James Mullis.
I am Mark Armbruster. I represent Marlboro School in this application. Real briefly, I just want to say that Marlboro has done an impeccable job in fulfilling all their conditions of approval in operating the school. In addition to that, with this application, they have the opportunity to remove an over-thirty-year eyesore in the community, and at the same time, fix, help to fix a parking problem. This is very consistent with the residential character of the neighborhood as being part of a school. We ask you to support the hearing examiner, unanimous recommendation, or decision, rather, of the Planning Commission, the unanimous recommendation of the Plum Committee, the city council office, the Windsor Square Association, and the vast majority of the community in supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mullis, this will be the last speaker.
My name is Jim DeMills. I'm president of the Board of Trustees of Marlboro School.
Either you spell it funny or you write funny, and I apologize.
Well, it's a French name, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
DeMills is how it's pronounced. I'm president of the Board of Trustees. Marlboro is proud of its involvement in the Hancock Park community. We're proud of what we've done for the education of young women in Los Angeles, and we're proud that we have complied with each and every condition of the CUP that we've had. And we really thank you and hope for your support in this very important project for us. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Ms. Mizakowski was first, and then Mr. Burnson.
Thank you. I think I pushed this one. I wasn't aware that Mr. Burnson was going to be here. This is just to let you know that the Planning and Land Use Management Committee did hold a lengthy hearing. To put this into context, members of the council, this is a case where we had a major conditional use application amending the school a year ago. And this case came about by way of having the one-year plan review. And in that plan review, which is a determination as to whether or not this school has lived up to all the conditions, which were very specific and dealt with carpooling and dealt with a lot of other issues, essentially, the school has had a very, very good record, and I think you heard both sides of the community on this case say the same thing, affirm that the school has done what it said it was going to do. It was during that process of hearing with the community that the community asked the school to consider looking at this particular lot, which is across the street from the school, but has been a problematic lot in the area at a corner Third and Rossmore, and look at it for the use as a parking lot. The school did that, made an application, which is what we have under appeal today. But in terms of the conditions, in terms of the working out with the large number of people from the community who have been very, very involved with the school, this was something that was recommended. It was also recommended by the council district councilman Ferraro's office, and I think it was by far the view of the members of the Planning Committee, that the use as proposed with the conditions, which is not going to allow students to use it, is now not going to allow parents to drop off, is not going to allow school buses, but only the teachers, who come generally once a day and leave once a day. And even at that time, it will be, have a security guard there who will help with the traffic. It will be locked at all other times. It will be in keeping in terms of a very ornate wall and hedge, which is very much in keeping with some of the high walls and hedges, particularly on Third, along Hancock Park and into Windsor Square, that this was consistent. It was a far better use than the deteriorated condition of the property that has been, that has been maintained in for any number of years. And I think the school and the community are going to have a win-win solution in this approval, and we did recommend denial of the appeal and confirmation of the project as the Planning Commission and the zoning administrator had ruled.
Thank you. Mr. Burnson.
I think Cindy covered it pretty well, but I just want to say that the committee did hear all the testimony, and what we have here is a request to provide additional parking on a location... And what we have here is a request to provide additional parking on a location that has been a terrible eyesore for many, many years. Some of the people who claim that it shouldn't be a parking lot had an opportunity to buy it if they really were sincere about rebuilding or doing something with it. That didn't happen. But we think that this will be a major improvement, particularly with the type of conditions that have been imposed as far as the landscaping, the fencing. And we think it will benefit the neighborhood, both aesthetically and also the fact that it will provide parking so it isn't on the streets. And there were definitely conditions put in to protect the hours of operation and so forth so that it would not become a nuisance. The council office does support this, and I would urge an I vote, I vote on the granting of the appeal.
The denial of?
Denial of the appeal, excuse me.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I also rise to make the unanimous recommendation of the Plum Committee. This was a very difficult issue, and I need you to understand that when we looked at Third Street and Rossmore, some people would like to think it's a residential street. And I think we're all familiar with Third Street, and I think we're all familiar with Rossmore. Right across the street from this proposed parking lot, which, by the way, is a model parking lot in terms of the shrubbery and the greenery that is included, it's not the kind of parking lot you see downtown L.A. But right across the street is a school. I mean, everybody's testified to that. And in the corner is a bus stop on Rossmore. And so the difficulty is people would like it to remain residential. The reality is many cars use that intersection. The reality is there's already a school in that corner across the street, and it's a major school, and it's part of that community. The city of Los Angeles is changing, and this is one of the gems that shouldn't change. I understand that about Hancock Park. And at the same time, I understand there has to be some transitionary use. And again, allowing this to go on, if at some point it becomes more desirable for a residential home that will be built on that lot, that's what the market will allow to happen. At this point, that had not happened. And so again, I think it's satisfying the need that is established right now because the school's already in place, and it's allowing for that activity to continue in that residential neighborhood. Exposing the streets to more parking, I don't think is part of a solution, although the neighbors were all willing to do that. We have to respect the reality why the restrictions are there in the first place. And so from my perspective, I just rose to note, to cite that I think all of us as a committee listened to the testimony very carefully, and it was a difficult decision. It's one of those decisions we have to be making nowadays, and it's appropriate in this instance.
Thank you. There being no other speakers, open the roll on item one, which is the Plum Committee report to deny the appeal and grant the permit for the parking lot. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved.
Madam Chair, could we consider 37A, I mean, 37 with the amendment that's before us at this time?
Sure, unless anybody has a problem with that. We had some.
We had one card in favor of it.
Yes, we have one card in favor, that's correct.
And we'd already held a public hearing, so we could.
Okay. All right, so without objection, we're on item 37.
Members of the council, 37, the amendment is what we call a cleanup amendment. When we start the process of the consolidated block grant, we don't know exactly how much money is going to be provided to us by the federal government. And in this case, there was a reduction of $204,000 on a block grant that represented close to $1 million. And so we had to take that reduction in all the proper categories and reduce the block grant. It didn't impact any individual projects that many of us have in the block grant. It took into account the reduction of the cap that has to happen because we have a limit of 25 percent, the reduction of the administrative costs because we have a limit. Now, what I want to mention to several of our members, this block grant that we're submitting also repaid some of the monies that we borrowed in the timeliness report to move some of the projects on that we were moving. And the issue that's before us in terms of the block grant is a continued threat of reduction of the human service delivery cap, and I want my colleagues to know that because this is the last block grant that I get to oversee as a council member. And the human service delivery network of the city of Los Angeles basically depends primarily on the block grant. So that is pretty much being continued. The neighborhood facilities portion has been increased. A lot of the economic development initiatives basically were curtailed to allow for that continuance of some of the other priorities. At the same time, I want my colleagues to understand that last year we introduced a whole new process, and many of you know it as the timeliness task force. And the timeliness task force is looking at projects that are ready to move, and that block grant can help move, and looking at projects that aren't moving, and basically allowing for the transfer of funds as part of the amendment process. And that is still in place. So many of you might have a project who you're saying, "How can I get it funded?" While the reality is if it's a project that's ready to move and can utilize that funds and there are monies that aren't moving, that process is continuing, and that will be part of a continued process. I just ask for unanimous vote. This is a process I start in December after the mayor basically submits a recommendation, and I need everybody to know that I think the mayor, as he's been seasoned and his staff has been seasoned, has continued to better its relationship and dialogue with the council members. And so this year, I didn't have a lot of that kind of questioning that went on. The committee reviewed it. The CLA OARS went over it. CDD, as a department, went over it. And it's not 100 percent perfect. It'll never be. And it's because we don't have enough money. But the reality, I think it's the best we can put out there right now, and I just ask for unanimous support.
We'll try here. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you. I stand to support the motion made by Mr. Hernandez. Having spoken with him, I wish to move that council file 00190 on attachment F of the OARS report not be received and filed, but taken to committee pursuant to the conversation that Mr. Hernandez and I had earlier for further review and disposition.
I have no problem with that. And there's several other projects, by the way, that I know Mr. Savornich had a project that he wanted to make sure was kept alive in the timeliness process, and we will be doing that. I think there was one also introduced by councilmember Chick.
Okay, so open the roll on item 37 as amended by both Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Ridley Thomas. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff asked till February 15th to get this to the feds, so could we move this forthwith?
I was just going to ask if you needed that forthwith. All right, forthwith on that one and on 31 as well. All right, that brings us, I believe.
Back to item number three, public hearing item.
We have two cards. First, Paul Malutus, and then Mike Stevens.
Madam Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity to give me to speak over to you. I represent the ONSAGE Homeowners Association. I'm the chairman, and my name is Paul Malutus. I have a question that puzzles my mind. If this money is allocated to purchase these properties, that means that the gradual expansion of the LAX will proceed. Therefore, I'm urging you, knowing your record and knowing how hard you had fought for the Westchester area, to not allocate that money and not let those houses be purchased. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Stevens. Mike Stevens, are you there? There you are. You're behind the post.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. Madam Chair, my name is Mike Stevens, as you're aware, and I'm president of an organization, small organization called LAX Expansion Now. We are located in south-central Los Angeles, Inglewood and Lenox. But what I'd like to tell you is that there are other communities as far away as San Pedro, Rancho Palos Verdes, who are opposed to LAX expansion. What you have here today on item number three is, in fact, LAX expansion. If you take a look at this map that I have here, and if you take a look right here where my finger is, this is the property that's in question. And this is the mayor, Richard Reardon's proposal, one of four. And what it will do, it will allow LAX to expand all the way to the 405 freeway, which is right here where my finger is. Okay, Solana. All right. And to the 405 freeway, which means that it will be 1, 500 feet from residential communities which are located on this side of the freeway. One moment, please, I'm sorry.
Let me take this.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Now, this, this project, what we are proposing here today, what you are proposing here is to bring LAX, this will allow LAX to expand all the way to the 405 freeway. In reference to the motion that you have before you today, first, the motion says that they may change the zoning to PF. The motion should say, but it does not, that any change in zoning will require hearings of the zoning change amendment of the general plan and environmental documentation. So I suggest the city of Los Angeles add this language to the item. Second thing is that though agencies do this all the time, separate the approval of property purchase and deciding on the type of use, this is really segmentation of the sequel environmental review process, which says a project should be considered and evaluated as a whole. The city is purchasing, the city is purchasing, the city, hey, Paul, it's okay, she's all right, is purchasing this property for no other use, for no other use other than for the airport, and not to include this in the motion as segmenting the project. Moreover, any conceivable use of the airport will be a departure from the existing land use in this neighborhood and incompatible with the neighborhood. For these reasons, the mere purchase of the land has the potential for significant environmental impact, and so requires an EIR and not just a negative deck or a categorical exemption. I'd like to ask you, are there any review and comment periods over the negative declaration that has been issued? And if so, when were they? And we'd like to have some community input. Remember, this, this will allow LAX to come all the way to the 405 freeway, and Inglewood residential communities are on the other side. Many of you have not decided as of yet on LAX expansion. I would suggest that you take another look at this and delay making a decision on this project. Many families, poor families, working-class families' future are on the line based upon your decision here today. Thank you, Ms. Calanter.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. And members of the council, as the representative, can you pipe down a little over here? As the representative of the district, I'm going to ask that we refer this back to my office because this is the first time that I've heard anybody from the Osage neighborhood come and say that they were opposed to this acquisition. I just want to, you did say you were opposed to the acquisition, didn't, yes, that's what I thought. So I'd like to have the opportunity to review this one more time, and I commit to you it'll be back to council quickly. So if there's no objection, that's going to be referred to council district six. And that brings us to.
Item number 27 called special by councilmember Calanter.
Yes, and so, Mr. Savornich, if you would take this and call on me, I'll do my thing here.
Chair recognizes council president pro 10. Calanter.
Mrs. Chick's microphone because, oh, no, I don't need to, hold on. I'll borrow the microphone. I can have mine, you're sitting in my chair. I didn't want to displace you. Thank you. The reason I called this special is that it's, it did not go through the Rules and Elections Committee, and so I didn't have the opportunity to ask the basic question I have there. I'm not against any of this, but I am concerned, as we're looking at proposals for increasing the public funding that will go toward election campaigns, what that's going to come out of. And I think when the council makes a decision about this, we ought to at least, hello? Excuse me, back here. We ought to at least be able to weigh the question of, I don't think you can answer this. This is not, I mean, I'm not here to try to challenge your proposal, but I do think the council ought to know if we're going to get stuck in a situation, or how likely it might be that we get stuck in a situation where we have to choose between funding political campaigns and funding neighborhood councils, or between funding political campaigns and funding police reform. And all I really want is the opportunity, it's my understanding that neither the CLA's office nor OARS has had a chance to report on this proposal. So it would seem to me that it would make sense for us to get, in addition to the Ethics Commission's proposal, some review by somebody. I don't believe it's been to the Budget Committee either, has it?
No.
No, okay. So this has not been to any committee. Obviously, in order to be prepared for the election cycle two years away, we have to have a certain amount of lead time, and I do respect the need for that. But we still have to get through this election cycle. And so it seems to be, members of the council, that somebody from city staff, either from OARS or the CLA or both, ought to at least be asked to give us a report before we vote on it. And I'd like to have that report in conjunction with your report, unless I'm the only one who feels that way.
We're with you, Madam President.
Well, if I, I noticed a remarkable dearth of speakers.
If I might, councilmembers, just for, LeAnn Palam, executive director of the City Ethics Commission, just for a bit of background for your information as you consider these issues, the recommendations that the commission has proposed have been discussed within the context of the existing fund for the matching funds trust fund, which, as you know, the charter requires for an annual appropriation to be deposited into the trust fund for purposes only for funding the public matching funds program in the city. So based on the projections that we looked at, these recommendations are made specifically to bear in mind not exceeding the level of the trust fund. So just for background information, there would be no additional request for revenues into that trust fund to fund these changes.
Well, can I just follow up? I mean, I appreciate that, and that's very foresighted of you. But what happens if we suddenly find ourselves with, as we will every time a whole batch of seats come open, find ourselves with a lot of candidates, and quite likely, a lot of candidates who will qualify for matching funds? Aren't we obligated to take care of them all?
Yes, in fact, we are. And as you may be aware, our Ethics Commission and Miriam Krensky here, our president is here, you may also want to provide some comment. Every election cycle, the commission is required at the outset of the election, once we see how many candidates have filed papers to be on the ballot, to, in a public meeting, both in the primary election as well as in the general election, take a look at the allocation in the fund and make a determination about whether or not the fund can fully allow all candidates who might qualify for matching funds to receive the maximum amount. They have the option under the regs, if they don't believe that there is the full amount, to withhold a certain amount, which they did in 1993, because the guiding principles were that there should be enough funds for the majority or the greatest number of candidates to access, both in the primary and in the general election. So that is something that the program requires the Ethics Commission to do twice in the primary season as well as in the general.
I think it would be useful also, just for our general edification, not necessarily in terms of voting on this proposal, to get a recap from you. I know you review all this stuff yourselves, as to how much money, how much public money is spent in each election as we go forward, and particularly where there have been instances where you had to hold back money. Or the other thing that I think is interesting is that in your efforts to craft rules that'll work, you've had some real challenges. And one of the rules is that if somebody who's not taking public funds exceeds the spending limit, then everybody is entitled to more money. And if that happens, or if it happens frequently, I think it would be useful for not only the council members, but for the public to know what has been the history of this program that was adopted by a vote of the people.
Yeah, if I could also, I appreciate the fiscal concerns, and just to echo LeAnn's comments, as president of the commission, we take quite seriously the notion that there is a matching fund, we have a trust fund with $8 million in it, we essentially have our budget, and neither in enacting these proposals, which we've looked at projections we believe are fully consistent with our fund, and we're not asking for there to be any additional allocation, we take quite seriously the notion that we have a fiscal responsibility, and that neither in these proposals designed to strengthen the program nor in our allocation that we made at our meeting last week for this upcoming election, which we fully expect to be a very competitive election. We have extremely strong participation in the program in this upcoming election, and we nonetheless believed, looking at a variety of models of. variety of models of potential spending, that the funds in the program were ample to cover this upcoming election, and by virtue of that, we decided to make full allocation. But we do appreciate the fact that we're provided, the commission is provided with a role, and we're sort of the check in the system. If at any time, through this proposal or any other proposal, the funds aren't there to be able to match everyone who opts into the system voluntarily, then we have the ability to decide not to allocate in full. So we sort of have our ability to tighten the purse strings if that should become necessary in any future year, and I can assure you that we take that responsibility quite seriously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sierkowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no problem and agree that it's probably worthwhile to have this, have Oars or the CLA look at it, not necessarily, well, not only to look at the potential longer-term implication, but to get more full exposure to the issue of what has been the past experience. And I think that in 1998, you did do a report about four election cycles and what had worked. And so I think some of these recommendations are really to increase that. But what I, what I would like to see is a little bit more information about, as we enhance it, is your expectation, what percentage of candidates are now availing themselves of this process, what or not? And is the enhancement meant to further encourage an increase that to as close to 100% as I guess we could achieve, which is what you really would like to achieve? And so I think that kind of discussion and focus on it will be healthy to see. I know that some changes were made in the initial draft to incorporate some things that made sense. One, now, I think Mr. Pacheco was just talking about the relative inconsistency of the time in which a candidate can raise money, but a lesser time in which the matching funds are available. And there was an inconsistency there that made no sense, and I think that's been changed. So I think a lot of what is recommended in here is good, but let's look and see the long-term implications in terms of how we are achieving more candidates availing themselves of this opportunity, as well as the long-term impact on the budgeting, on the trust fund. As it would increase and as we might increase the rate and proportion of spending, is that going to have, down the line with a very successful multiple candidate, multiple race election, is that going to have impact on the budget? Are we, or are we adequately preparing the budgetary side for the hopeful increase in the candidates who are going to avail themselves of the program? So I think it's a, it's a very, very good recommendation. I think it can go into effect well in advance of a two-year, election cycle two years from now. But I think the increased review of it and answering some of those questions would be useful.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Fuer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm glad that Ms. Galanter raised the issue about whether anything in this proposal could take away funds from other vital city services, because it enables the commission staff and leadership to disabuse the public of a notion that even at least one major candidate is promoting. And that is, excuse me, one second, please? And that is that somehow, by providing matching funds, city services are being sacrificed. Let's be very clear. The voters enacted an amendment to the charter that requires the city to contribute a like amount, every, I think, $2 million into a trust fund, and that money can't be spent for anything else. Nor are we infusing additional money beyond that into the trust fund. It's a fund. It can't be spent for anything else. The voters wanted it. Why did they want it? Because they wanted to make elections more competitive. They wanted to assure that incumbents don't have unfair advantages, that challengers have the ability to compete. They wanted to be sure that people with a lot of money didn't win automatically because they have a lot of money. So here we have a proposal which further promotes the same goals motivating the electorate when we enacted these changes in the first place. It says that challengers need to be able to compete. Let's increase the available match to them from a timing standpoint so that they're viable sooner. And it says something to all of us who are incumbents. It says, rather than having to devote so much time to fundraising, if you increase the pace at which matching funds are available, perhaps we can devote more time to the work we were elected to perform while we are both incumbents and running for either the office we occupy or for a different office. Those are good things. And the proposal compresses the period in which the campaign would be conducted, which also would be merciful from the standpoint of many of us have been campaigning for a long time. Obviously, there is a desire from the president and from others that there be an additional report provided to the council. The report is going to verify what we just discussed. There's nothing else to say. It's fine if that report comes forward. I would just urge that, as it does, kind of memorializing in writing what we know to be the case, that we do so quickly because the otherwise candidates for city council, say, in two years, will be thinking that April 10th is the starting date for fundraising. And under this proposal, it would not be.
Right.
So we have to hurry the pace up, get the council information it needs. If it comes to budget, fine, I'll waive it, because there's no budgetary implication from this whatsoever.
Well, as long as everybody's convinced there's no budgetary implications, then I'm not concerned about it. But that's what I wanted to be sure. Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, this program has always been of great interest to me because without it, I wouldn't be here. And I also realize by making that comment, it probably put the program in jeopardy. But one of the things to which I wanted to clarify is that there's so much money in the trust fund every election cycle. I would assume that in years where the three citywide offices are up, plus half of the council, the expenditures out of the matching funds trust are more than just when half of the council is up. The one issue to which I wanted to make sure that there could possibly, or there may be safeguards in place, in the years when, like this year, when you have the three citywide races and half of the council up, when the expenditures out of the matching funds program goes up, and especially when you have the high-profile mayoral races, city attorney races, controllers' races, then the council, a couple of high-profile council races, you know, what I want to make sure is that historically, has not the matching funds program participants received their funds on a first-come, first-served basis? Or are there projections made prior to that election cycle that says, okay, we know that we're going to have maybe a half a dozen mayoral candidates, two or three city attorney candidates, a couple of controller candidates, that are all going to be big-money matching participants? So then council candidates who are slow on the draw, let's say, to get in their request could find themselves not being funded because we deplete the proportion of matching funds or of all of them that we've set aside for that race. And I know $8 million is a lot of money to have in the trust, and I know that historically we've never even approached distributing that amount of money in the matching funds program. And so by charter, since it's an $8 million trust fund, is it conceivable that we could deplete the entire trust fund, let's say if we got into a really expensive series of campaigns one year, indeed that it is a first-come, first-served matching funds program? So if a mayoral candidate tapped out all the money that they wanted, or you had a bunch of them tap out, would it deny candidates running for council offices, let's say, to get the money? I just want to make sure, is there enough money in the trust fund now in the foreseeable future that everyone who wanted to participate could participate even in a busy matching funds year?
Yes, and again, based on the projections that we made for this election cycle, which as you know is an extraordinarily busy election cycle for the city, based on past experience and the numbers that we've actually seen candidates receive when there are so many candidates in the field, the commission acted to leave the allocation at 100%. So we do anticipate the candidates who are able to fully max out will be able to do so in this election cycle. For historical perspective, in 1993, I mentioned earlier, the commission at that point, again, a comparable year, election year to this one, with so many candidates, open seats in the mayoral race and so forth, and a number of viable candidates. The commission did withhold funding at about 50% in the first go-around early in the election. In the end, all candidates were entitled to receive the maximum amount that they could become eligible to receive at that point. So they did have the opportunity then. And again, just in terms of the money for perspective, that candidates became eligible to receive in 1993, I think the total was about $5.1 million in that very busy election year.
Out of the $8 million that was allocated?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And if I could maybe add to that, when we decided for this election to allocate 100% of our funds, we didn't do it with our eyes closed or on a hope and a whim that there would be enough money. I think it would be irresponsible of your commissioners to do that. We looked at projections, some more conservative than others, in regard to, given the number of candidates and those who are participating in the race, and making assumptions as to how many would completely max out, how many wouldn't. Would we have the money, not simply for this race, but for future races?
Sure.
The voters have entrusted us with $2 million a year to be used solely for your matching fund program. And the question in our mind, with our $8 million that have now, has now risen to over $9 million through interest it's accrued, what's the most responsible and appropriate way to make use of the matching fund and the money that voters have entrusted to us to achieve the kind of open competitive races that the voters sought to bring about? So when we looked at these proposals, and when we looked at allocating for this race, I think we did so in a very conservative way. There were more aggressive proposals that were brought to us, things that would have looked at a three-to-one match, things that would have looked at increasing even further the amount of money people could receive. And we rejected those in part because we wanted to be sure that all of this could be accomplished within the budget that we have. We're not asking for further allocations, and none of us, this was unanimously approved after over a year's worth of public hearings, no one on the commission entered into it with any queasiness that we would deplete the fund in a way that would do disservice to future candidates.
My only comment is, it's, it's good to hear that everybody can participate if they want to, because that multiples of hundreds of thousands of dollars to the citywide candidates, those amounts of money are important to them, but equally so, the tens of thousands of dollars or less to council candidates proportionally is just as important to them if they want to be successful or attempt to be successful, so.
And the system has within it the safety net that at every election, before the general and before the primary elections, your commission has to decide whether we have the money for full allocation. So we have that safety net built in. This really shouldn't occasion any money. It doesn't have that within it.
I think you made that actually very clear.
Thank you, Madam.
Okay, Mr. Fuer.
Madam President, taking into account your concerns, but also, I think I heard you say something else a moment ago, since as the Budget Chair, I would waive this item.
Yeah, I let it go.
I was going to just ask that we move forward on the matter as presented today.
Yes, I certainly, on the basis of the assurance that you've made a couple of times here, and I heard you every single time, I have no objection to that. Okay, item 27 is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. Fourth with on that, I think you probably need that.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Wait, can I ask for one before we do that, Mike?
Sure.
We do have special two that's circulating right now, and I actually have to leave for about 20 minutes and then come back. Special two is what we used to call a friendly Prop 5. And so it involves refinancing water bonds in order to take advantage of lower interest rates. And so if there is no strenuous objection, I'd like to ask that we take up special two. And I've now done the whole explanation. You have to do the suspension of the rules problem.
Well, in terms of bringing it in special, the council just needs to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and that there's an immediate need to act. The DWP Commission acted this morning, and in order to go ahead and fund this, they would have to do this immediately to take advantage of the financial situations.
All right, open the roll on the findings, special two, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. Open the roll on special two. Well, does anybody else want to say anything? Open the roll on special two.
I think, yeah, now you're going to take the vote on the motion itself.
The motion itself. That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
Don't interrupt me. I'm going to have it done in a second.
I'm sorry.
Open the roll on special two, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, that's approved. Fourth with on that. Thank you. Now, Mr. Hernandez had a request.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just would ask for suspension of the rules to allow for a three-minute presentation for the citizens' unit on participation. They had filled out a card on item 37, they were in support of it, but I wanted them to be able to make a presentation. There's a booklet on your desk that explains the results of their survey, and every council office has a representative on this unit, and they'd been out in all the CIPAs and talking to folks, and looking at the results of the survey, I found it very interesting, and I just would ask that we give them an opportunity to make a three-minute presentation through the full council.
All right, is there any objection? This is, I looked at this book, and this is a really impressive survey they've got there. All right, without objection, then we're going to actually run the timer on you. It'll be a new experience for you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Hernandez, and thank you to the council for allowing us to do this briefly. We won't take more than three minutes of your time, but we just wanted to draw your attention to the booklet that's been handed out. We know the consolidated plan has been approved, and we did, as a board, endorse the consolidated plan. But there were a couple of things that we wanted to point out. This report before you was a result of CUP board members, and as Councilman Hernandez said, most council people do have a representative on the board going out into the communities to festivals, to fairs, anywhere where we thought more than 100 people would be practically, and asking them to rank the needs of their communities as they saw them. We sort of thought, we had this crazy notion that if we were spending community development money, maybe we should figure out how communities, how people in those communities want to see them developed. So we asked over 3,000 people, one by one, form by form, ranking by ranking, to take 28 different needs in their communities and rank them. And all 28 are very popular. It wasn't like there were some easy ones and hard ones. They were all hard, and people said to us over and over again, how do we rank these things? And we said, well, this is the hard part about decision-making. They did rank them, and we came out with a number of interesting findings. One of the things we found is that housing is, came out far and away, number one, and not just affordable housing, but every single housing thing we asked about showed up very strongly in this survey. The second thing that we found was interesting was children, youth, and family issues, people-related issues tended to show up more strongly than infrastructure issues and sort of neighborhood issues. And so we really found that striking, that people really wanted to sort of help their less fortunate neighbors first. And the other thing that we sort of, that struck us was that this is really an interesting ranking of a lot of issues that people care about that really aren't specifically related to CDBG funding. We happen to be a board that's related to CDBG funding, but the people answering the survey don't know that. All they know is that they're ranking what they think their communities need. So we really encourage you as a council that as you're going forward with the budget process, which is just now starting, and some other processes that you do, you don't think of this report as just a consolidated plan CDBG-related report, but that you see it as something that can really inform a lot of the decisions that have to be made, the tough decisions that have to be made about priority ranking. Say that again? Oh, and I think that's it. I never, I'm Glenn Gritsner, by the way, I'm the member-at-large and CD5 representative. This is Peter Lassen from Councilman Hernandez's office. I didn't introduce us because I felt so pressured for time. So thank you very much for indulging us, and also, this is sort of our yearly raising of our hand to say, we're still here and we're still working hard, and we're still really taking our role seriously to get community input into the consolidated plan. And as you can see by the data on the report, this was completed in September 2000. The mayor's office saw it very early, so we've been trying to be, we've been trying to be a part of this process forward. And you will see a newer, better, and more extensive one of these next year in whatever office you happen to hold. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Extensive.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and I do encourage everybody to look at the, particularly the rating of all issues. What I found interesting is the number one issue that emerged is affordable housing by far. And then the second issue was enforcement of housing laws. I think it's important that we look at this because as we deal with the issues that affect us, this was a process that went out into neighborhoods and surveyed people. And I just found, again, the results very interesting. When they were rating neighborhood issues, street repairs was above neighborhood parks. And normally, that wasn't the case in the past. So again, it gives us a feel of some of the things that are going on in neighborhoods, and some of the concerns that are being expressed in terms of the quality of life. And I just encourage everybody to take the time to look at the study.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Councilmen. The Chair, oh, the Chair would like to move to the next item. Yeah, the Chair's, Chair is here. The next item is 28C, called special by Councilmember Walters. Ah, there we go. Councilwoman, item 28C, called special by you?
Yes. I called 28C special, council members, because this is an event to be held at the Biltmore Hotel. It's the Grammy Awards, their own party, to which It's the Grammy Awards, their own party, to which the public is not invited, and we're going to spend over $47,000 to allow them to have a private party in my district. I am opposed to this. I would hope that you would oppose it as well. I would much rather see the money go for a lot of other things that we're raking and scraping, trying to find money for, and I think this is money that should never be allocated by a public body to a private event.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any other council member that wishes to be heard on this item? The Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Members of the council, I can appreciate Ms. Walters' concerns, and when she talks about her district, she's talking about downtown LA. I think, again, we were able to witness New Year's celebrations throughout the world, and some of us questioned what happened to LA when you look at what they do in New York and what they do in other cities. The Grammys is one of the events that now is identified with Los Angeles, and the fact of the matter is that we had lost them one year, and we got them back. From my perspective, when you're promoting our city, there's no question in my mind that this is one of the events that does that. And I just ask for an aye vote of the motion that was introduced by Councilmember Ferraro. And I look at it as not only a one-night event, but part of the economic development strategy of a city as a whole in a region that basically promotes the entertainment industry.
Thank you, Councilmen. Is there any other council member that wishes to speak on this item? If not, Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Nine ayes, one no.
That item is approved. There's been a request by Councilman Pacheco that we take Special One out of order and consider it at this time. Is there any objection by any council member that we do that? And I'll allow you all a moment to see whether or not you want to object or not. Any objection, council?
What is that?
Okay, seeing no objection, Special One is now before us at this time. I believe we need to make the findings. Madam City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is a return of reap money because CD 13 was just notified, and this is a motion by Mr. Pacheco, but this is, CD 13 was just notified that they need to assist, that there needs to be assistance with relocation of three tenants in an untenable building, and housing is verified that this needs to be done immediately.
Okay.
Therefore, the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and there's an immediate need to act.
Okay, first, let's vote on the findings. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on the findings and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Okay, the item is now before us. Mr. Pacheco? The item is before us. Move approval?
Move approval.
Okay. We do have two speakers' cards that we will ask them to speak before we take a vote. Cynthia Wells and Deborah Campbell.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Ladies, are you in favor?
Yes.
You're in favor of the action?
Yes.
Okay.
The property at 1305 Waterloo is draining its sewage through my property, my neighbor's property, and one other property next to her. This has been going on for two years. I have standing water in my backyard, and my retaining wall is seriously stressed. You can walk back there at times, you literally want to retch, and it's just an unacceptable situation. This is not the only problem with this property. I have called the police many times about bottles being thrown from this property. One time, I found over 30 bottles in my backyard that had been hailed down on us. My sliding glass window's been broken, my garden umbrella's been torn. They throw bottles, they throw rocks the size of a man's fist, larger than that, and we have a whole collection of items. My neighbor has been hit in the head and bloodied, and he went up and asked them to stop it, and they just kowtow and say, oh, no, we won't do it again. And of course, the next day, it's happening. Sometimes I'm calling the police two and three times a week on this. Well, I could go on and on, but I did email you each letters detailing this, so that's all I want to say on that, and please take care of this problem for us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Deborah Campbell?
Councilmembers, if I may pass on this one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any council member that wishes to speak on this item before we vote? Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
This item is approved. Fourth with. Councilman Ridley Thomas, you have a motion for reconsideration?
Please, Mr. President, Item Number 44, I would move reconsideration.
Councilman Ridley Thomas has moved reconsideration on Item Number 44. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, the item is before us. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, the request had been made to continue this item, which I think is appropriate with the exception of the need to move forward with staff positions in order to get the RFP in place. The RFP can't be moved forward. Now, we're not talking about evaluating the RFP, we're not talking about making any decisions about it. It is essentially the preparation. Therefore, move that this item, particularly Recommendation Number Four, dealing with the staff position on today's council agenda, move forward as requested in Item 44A, just the staff positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Is there any other council member that wishes to speak at this time? Not Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion is before us. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
That item is approved.
Fourth with, sir.
Fourth with. Next?
Item Number 35, called special by Councilmember Fuhr. There's an amending motion, Padilla Miskowski on the file.
Mr. Fuhr, Number 35?
Where is the amending motion? I haven't seen the amending motion.
It's 35A. It's on there.
You know, if we could just, let me, hold on.
Why are you knocking me out? Huh?
Okay, yeah, the, um...
Oh.
Okay, so this amending motion is essentially, is consistent with the request from the mayor's office, Mr. Padilla, is that correct? Is the, a question I would have for city staff, is someone here who can speak to this, Sharon perhaps, or somebody?
Ron.
Quit palling around.
Regarding Item 35, which is the risk management issue, you know, obviously, it's extremely important for us to move forward with this item. This item isn't so much a reform issue as it is a way for us to assure that we're able to handle the litigation that has been and will continue to be generated, not just by the Rampart issue, but by police litigation matters in general. With that in mind, the mayor has requested that, given the importance of this task, that we have flexibility in how we staff the program. Can Mr. Padilla's amending motion take effect today, or must there be any further review? I don't mind having it happen today, as long as it's legally permissible to do so.
Under the Charter, the, when you fill, when you decide not to fill positions within civil service, you have to make a determination of feasibility and infeasibility of doing it within the existing system. That has not happened, and that is a requirement for the police department to come to that conclusion after they have attempted to fill those positions. I've talked to the police department, they're going to keep the data. At the point in time that has, is the determination that it should be forwarded as a, as an alternative, and we shouldn't decide ahead of time that there is a problem until there is a problem.
Is there a way for us, I was going to actually ask that because Mrs. Miskowski is holding a hearing in the committee next week, I was going to ask if we could have the discussion next week in committee and bring it back like a week from today, but you're saying, Mr. Deaton, that it's premature because we won't have the data on which to base the conclusion required by this motion?
Right. If and when the police department goes out and has openings, which they have sent out flyers for filling those positions, and at the conclusion of two weeks, they're all filled, or at the conclusion of all three weeks, they're filled, then there is no action either necessary nor legal. If and when three, four, five, six weeks from now, there is, they have repeatedly gone out and have not filled those positions, and then I think there is a justification for, under the Charter, I forget the Charter section number right now, the new one, I wouldn't know it anyway, but the, anyway, there's this Charter section that has to do with feasibility, et cetera. They have to make those findings, they will keep the data, they will keep us advised, and at the appropriate time, if they are not being successful, then we should act. Until we're not being successful, we shouldn't, we should not and cannot.
If I could just make a statement, because most of it was taken with Ron's answer, just real fast. I agree that we want to have as much flexibility as possible to move forward as rapidly as possible with these positions, and the spirit motivating Mr. Padilla's motion, I think, is exactly right. I would hate for us to act, however, in a way contrary to the Charter today, even though the goal is a good one, only to find that if the department were to act pursuant to this, we could find ourselves on the wrong end of a complaint or litigation for that matter for violating the Charter. That would be a bad result and slow things down. So if it must go in the way Mr. Deaton's describing, fine, but I do support the spirit of Mr. Padilla's action here, which I think is ultimately the right thing to do if we can do it.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. The Chair recognizes Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I think we're saying the same thing here. As I read the motion that I introduced, it doesn't make the conclusion today, it doesn't make the finding today, we wouldn't be making the decision today to go outside of city staff to accomplish these services. But I think it's appropriate to discuss in the context of not only the magnitude of the police reform, reforms that we need to implement in the city, but the timeliness and the urgency with which we need to act, to have the dialogue, recognizing the vacancies that we've had in the department historically, the size, the numbers of the vacancies, both on the civilian side and the sworn side we have in the department, to say, in about two weeks or four, or four weeks from now, we're probably going to be ending up in this position in terms of our ability to hire, in terms of our ability to recruit for positions across the board. So recognizing that, let's at least begin to think about it, let's dialogue. It may be contrary to law to begin to plan and make decisions in that direction right now, but I think we're kidding ourselves if we think this isn't going to be a very probable option sometime down the road. Another thing I think we also need to discuss is how much, and I would ask that the committee that takes it up next week answer some of these questions and bring back to the full council some recommendations. What exactly is the timeline that we're going to pursue? Is two weeks enough time to say, you know what, we've cast the nets and there's no fish in them? Or is four weeks, or is six weeks, or is eight? What's the timeline that we're going to follow? Again, recognizing the size of the problem and the urgency by which we need to act. That's what I understood the CLA, right.
In terms of what you want, though, that, we're on the same team if that's what...
I'm confident that it would be appropriate to act on this today. Again, it, all it does is give us the flexibility, it outlines our options, and it reiterates that there's some legalities and requirements that we would have to follow if we were going to pursue the contracting-out option. So I believe we're appropriate in acting on this today and supportive of this today, but I sense some resistance or opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Deaton, prior to my calling, the next council member?
Two things. One is that I think that it's appropriate for the committee to monitor how well these are being filled, and at the time that the police department feels as though there is a necessity to do something and that we are not being successful in filling these positions, we should, the committee would then be in a position to come forward. From a budgetary standpoint, the money is in the wrong accounts at this point to do that. So at the time that it is appropriate, then a package could be put together, assuming that there is information to support this finding, that would put the money in the appropriate accounts and bring it back to council to actually act on. So there is, there is clearly difficulty in the police department relative to filling civilian and sworn positions, but I think there's a process that we need to go through and before we, before the council acts.
Thank you, Mr. Deaton. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Miss Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have been working on this, members of the council, since February. That's when we first got the report from the police department, asking, making the initial request. As one might imagine, the initial request by the police department was for a much broader program and needed some really significant review and understanding. It has been reviewed by ORS, it has been reviewed and discussion with the police department, it's been reviewed and discussed in our Rampart Working Group, which has city attorney, Mr. Fuhr and I, the mayor's office, ORS as well. It has been reviewed at length with, in fact, the section of the police department that really needs this work. And members of the council, if we were able to do, to share with you a little bit of the employees who are now in this division, who by way of changes in court law and application of law, by way of increase in the court cases themselves, the members of the police department, both civilian and sworn, who have the obligation to provide records to court cases, provide records for our own management, to know how we can manage court cases, it is in a dire, dire strait. This needs to be done, it needed to be done actually last November, when we've had the revised integrity package put forward, but for reasons of request of delay on the part of the mayor's office and others, it was delayed. We can delay no longer. We must adopt this today. I think that Item 35A, which is a request that says if we are not successful in making the hiring that we need to make, we should look at other alternatives. That's absolutely a valid approach. In fact, it's such a valid approach that the committee report that you have in front of you says that the police department shall report back in 30 days on the status of the program implementation. How are they able to do the hiring? It's so critical that they are doing that hiring. Part of our report that ORS had prepared and the ad hoc committee recommended, as well as Budget and Finance, was come back in 30 days and tell us. That dovetails very well with this motion, and we will very closely monitor it, manage it, and make sure that the Risk Management Group, who is in dire need of people to perform these services, is working very closely with the Risk Management Unit of the City Attorney's Office. In fact, part of this action today is put them in the same building, in the same office, so they can work fluidly together, which in fact, they are doing, they just need the space and the bodies to do it. This dovetails with that, but as Mr. Deaton says, we can't make that decision today because under the Charter, we must make a finding that we have not been able to fill it in the normal process. So I ask for the council's adoption today of Item 35. Let the Risk Management Team go and hire the people it needs, let them do the work with General Services to get in the place that they need to. We will have this on committee as quickly as is needed, and we bring it back as is needed if they are not able to fill the positions in the normal process. And I know that we've already had, I think, Risk Management out there looking and ready to advertise and starting to interview for some of these positions because it's so critical that we move quickly. So I ask for the council's unanimous vote on this and give our support to the Risk Management Division of the Police Department that is so necessary and vital for so many things we're doing now and that we've asked the department to do.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Mr. Deaton, if you don't mind, I heard the urgency expressed by Councilmember Miskowski, who also chairs the Public Safety Committee, to put these positions in place as soon as possible. And then I heard your response to Mr. Fuhr's question as to the process we would have to go through if the positions weren't filled. Why are we anticipating not being able to fill the positions? What are some of the obstacles that would prohibit us from doing that? And how is it that your process would expedite that?
I don't know the latter answer. The problem that, the reason we think we're going to have problems is we've had problems in the past.
Right.
And there's a difficulty in filling civilian positions in general in the police department. And that's been a historic, that's not today or tomorrow, I mean, that's, or yesterday, that's been a problem for a long time. And it has to do with several factors, some of which are correctable and some of which are not. The, so what, all I'm saying is, is that these are, these are jobs that, under the Charter, have been determined to be civil service positions. Under the Charter, not to do civil service positions for a particular function requires that we find that it's infeasible for this particular function not to be done in that fashion in order to, so we have to demonstrate that.
Right. And I guess the reason I'm asking the question is, let's say, filling the positions requires some kind of background check. Now, is that same requirement going to apply to a private contractor trying to fill the positions?
I would certainly hope so.
And, see, I'm asking the questions because what I'm trying to get to is, the process you described to us doesn't necessarily expedite the process for us being able to fill the positions. You said, we're going to go through the process, if we can't fill the positions, then we might allow for this process to hap- allow for this process to happen after we comply with the charter requirements that we proved we couldn't fill them. Then we might go through this process through the private sector, and in that case, they're still going to have to comply with certain kinds of provisions. Is anybody doing that kind of analysis as to what the difficulty may be, and what it is we need to do to overcome those difficulties in regards to these positions?
Jerry Greenwald, ORS. I don't believe the department has looked into this situation that deeply, but they have indicated that if we did go to an outside contractor, for instance, paralegals, a paralegal firm, or something like that, there would be some required background check, whether it would be as involved, or as in-depth as someone from a civil service list, I, I don't know.
I, I'm just asking, because I think that as part of this process, what we could do today is instruct that we start looking at that process, in case it, it's something we have to analyze. I'm just not sure which ones are going to fulfill the requirement of getting the positions filled. I just think that, again, it's the same kinds of obstacles that exist in us doing it through the civil service process, might also exist in the private sector trying to do it. And again, time is of the essence, and that's why I was asking, we might want to do that analysis concurrently.
Well, I would suggest that the police department, if they, and, and ORS as well, if at the point in time that there is a determination that the process of filling these positions is not working, before they come back to council with an alternative, they should look at how they're going to approach it, so they have a program.
Right.
In order to accomplish it. In other words, they have to address the issue of background checks, and why hiring contract personnel is somehow going to be better, and quicker, and less turnover than, than hiring civil service.
And that's what I'd like to see happen.
I think that, I think that's, but that comes, comes at the point in time, the police department makes the determination they can't fill.
Okay.
If they can't fill, then they've got to figure out, what are they going to do in, in place of this? And what are the feasibilities of getting around the problem that, for some reason, we can't attract.
Right.
Regular civil service.
But I, I just wanted to establish that you started your presentation, Mr. Deaton, with the fact that historically, we haven't been able to fill these positions as fast as we'd like to.
Historically, we have not been able to fill civilian positions.
As fast as we'd like to.
As like, as we'd like to. We have, we have filled, or sworn. We have filled, but this is somewhat the same function, but it, because of factors that are happening in the court, this is a much more substantial staff for this function than we've ever had before, and much more emphasis. One could argue that because of that, the emphasis is going to be different, and maybe the recruiting will be better. I, I don't know.
Okay.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Pacheco was providing me with valuable insights that will impact public policies for years to come. I thank you, Mr. Pacheco. On this matter, I think all of us are in receipt of a letter dated today from mayor of this city on this subject. And it claims, I think, I could read verbatim, while I fully support the goals of reform. Now, Mr. President, somehow I find it difficult to reconcile yesterday's release from the mayor's office on matters related to reform, and today's letter. So it seems to me that veracity ought to count for something. To the extent that that is the case, the Chair of Public Safety has indicated for several months, this matter has been evaluated. There are no secrets here, and there's no need at this moment to do anything other than what has been in place for some time. I rise to support that motion, and that which appears to us today as an amendment be sent to committee for its due consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Fuhrer.
Mr. President, I, I wanted to rise because I thought it was so important to underscore some points that Ms. Sikowski made about the significance of this. In the Rampart Working Group, let's just tell it like it is, we've heard very bluntly that because of the staffing problems in this area, people who've been arrested, who may well be, they haven't been adjudicated as such, but may well be dangerous criminals, walk. And they walk because we aren't being able to provide the information that we're compelled by law to do to a court. And that's a bad place to be. We can't be in that position anymore. And, you know, Cindy's emphasis on the importance of this action, the underlying action, is so right, and I hope will lead not only to this action happening unanimously today, but other actions down the pike. These positions are not, from a public standpoint, very interesting. They don't put more patrol officers on the street, they don't guarantee there'll be less gang violence in a neighborhood, the things that we're elected to do. This is not a visible demonstration of that. But these positions will assure that we don't end up being in the lousy position of having a judge say, this person can't be tried because the police department hasn't had the ability to provide information the defense council's entitled to get, and that person goes on the street. As for the amending motion, I think there may be an emerging consensus that the sense of the motion is the right sense, that flexibility is a good thing to do, that it goes to the committee chaired by Ms. Sikowski, that in the event, in the very near future, should there be a problem in hiring, it'll come back. And that'll be the end of that, that piece of it. There's no disagreement, as the policy matters, to whether that flexibility should be there in the event it's necessary, it's mandatory. I don't want any more people who well could be criminals to walk, because a judge says the city's not systemically prepared to deal with our own obligations. This is, it's interesting, if this is characterized as a reform measure, it's really not so much a reform measure. It's a measure designed to assure that we handle ourselves properly in court. It won't get to the root of so many of the other risk management issues that pervade the department. That's fundamental, it's necessary, it's next. But this is before us today, and as Ms. Sikowski noted, we've been wrestling with it a while. Let's be done with it and move it forward.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Deaton, I thought I heard you say that this action would fly in the face of the city charter. Was I correct in deducing that from what you stated?
I think charter provides for a process that you determine whether or not it's infeasible to recruit before you decide to do something different.
Okay.
And, and therefore, I guess, your characterization is correct. I think the, the other thing is, no matter what the area, I mean, if they, if the police department can't hire in other areas, they should be determining that and coming forward with solutions as well, not just in this one area, in all areas.
Has this item been to budget and finance? Where did Mr. Fuhrer go?
This went through the Rampart Working Group, and it went through the committee that Ms. Sikowski chairs, the ad hoc committee on police something and practices.
But it did not go to budget finance?
It went, it went to budget, but for the, it went to budget, but the matter had been considered in the other committee, and just went right to the floor.
So.
We didn't have a discussion on the subsequent developments in this budget.
You waived it in budget finance.
It came to the budget committee as an agendized item, and so we sent it to the council floor, having already had discussions about it, and it hasn't had a more thorough discussion there.
All right.
If I might clarify, 35A, I think, 35, I fully support.
Right.
I think 35, the item 35, and the risk management and the budgetary issues related, I think is a very high priority item, and I think, as was mentioned before, deserves unanimous support.
So it's 35A?
And Ms. Walters, 35A didn't even come to the committee, that's new today.
Okay. It has not been to committee. If we were to act on 35A today, does, and you say that there is a council, there's a charter provision that should prevent us from doing that, does that set a precedent for other departments in the future to make the same kind of determination that this 35A would make?
Well, my problem with 35A is that it gives the presumption that we should contract out before we have established by, that there is in fact no, that it is infeasible to do otherwise.
And there would be other, if, if we recruit and are not able to hire the, the personnel, at that time, they can come back and ask.
Right. And also, the, the budgetary numbers in 35, in other words, where the money is in the accounts is, if you're going to contract, are in the inappropriate accounts anyway. So it would have to come back to council for transfers of funds, et cetera, in any fashion, in any, in any way.
You, you just answered my next question, so I'll go on to the last one. Very quickly, the procedure, what procedure would be followed if we acted on 35A today? Because if it's not consonant with the charter, how do we proceed if that's adopted, 35A is adopted?
Well, quite frankly, if I were the police department, I would still proceed to document the fact that I couldn't recruit and couldn't fill the positions, because at the end of the day, you have to justify your position in order to contract out in any fashion. So it just gives a, the impression that we have made the decision already that you can't recruit. I think we need to make, do that on a factual basis and come back. I'm not against, in, given this circumstance, given the situation we have in this particular area, and the need to respond to the requests from the courts, and the, et cetera, if we cannot fill the positions, then we need to do something else. There's no question about that. I'm just, it's a.
We don't need the authority upfront.
We don't, we need the procedure to be followed, is all.
Councilmembers, I'm going to support 35, and not support 35A, and urge you to do likewise.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Bernson.
Yes, members of the council, I think there's no question about the fact that we have to act on this and do it immediately, and put this process in place. But it, it lends to a much deeper problem. The deeper problem is that there's something wrong with the system that doesn't allow us to recruit the type of personnel that we need in the department. I don't know where it's broken down. Other departments throughout the country don't seem to have the same problem. There's something wrong. Either it's in our personnel system, it's in the department, somewhere along the line, the system is broken, and it needs to be fixed. Now, obviously, while we all want to abide by the charter, there are provisions in the charter that allow us to act in emergency-type situations where the city has to act. Am I not correct about that, Mr. Deaton?
That's correct.
Just yes or no?
Yes.
And I think that we need to look very seriously at this thing, because, and as I read 35A, it doesn't say to go ahead and, and contract out or to hire. It says if it, if there's no other solution, it gives you the flexibility to do so. And I think we have to give the city the flexibility to do its job, and that is to not allow criminals to walk, to be able to carry out the functions that are, are important for the city. And obviously, we need a complete overhaul of our personnel recruitment system. There's something wrong, we need to find out what it is. I would urge, I would, I would urge the department to, to really either bring in somebody, an expert, to analyze what we're doing wrong, or, or some outside help, and tell us why we're not able to fill positions that are equivalent in pay or higher than other agencies throughout the country. And we have a great retirement system and other things. I don't know what the answer is, but I know we need to find out. As far as 35A is concerned, I don't have any problem with voting for it today. It just, it simply sets up an option and flexibility for the department, so they can do the job that we know has to be done. So I'm going to vote for 35A, and I'm going to certainly vote for 35 today. But I would ask that we really take a look at what we're doing wrong. We're doing something wrong on recruitment.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I rise to offer a friendly correction to comments made by my colleague from the 5th District, with your permission, sir. He characterizes this as something other than reform. If we are talking about a matter of how we present this critically important department in our city, if we are talking about issues related to recruitment, personnel, management liability, the whole range of things, I doubt that we can avoid recognizing that this is somehow connected to reform. And if in fact, we take this as an opportunity to recognize that rather than in a frontal way that reform is being hammered by the mayor of this city, that in a subtle way, an appeal to flexibility in this regard may be another way of dealing it, you can be most assured that this has something to do with reform. Mr. President, with your permission, and in complete violation of the rules that govern this council, I move the previous question.
Hasn't stopped us before. Chair recognizes Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not so, not so fast. Had offered this motion for the obvious reasons, not as a substitute or anything in conflict and in contradiction with item 35 that's before us today. We've gone back and forth, there's members on both sides who believe it's appropriate to vote on 35A today, and those who wish to refer to committee. I would move that we vote on 35A today, as well as item 35, and ask for your support for both.
Chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas. I think for the obvious here.
Further request of the inimitable councilmember of the 11th District. I move the previous question on the whole nine yards, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Is there any objection to the previous question? If not, Mr. Clerk, what do we have before us?
35A is before you first.
Okay.
No question, no vote on 35A.
It's not a point of order, Mr. Fuhrer? Thank you. We were waiting.
We have two motions, I think. One was to vote on it, and one was to send it to committee. Those are the only choices, it's not to deep-six it, right? So which is before us now? Which substitutes for the other?
Well, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference, because in any event, the bottom line will be the same.
Maybe. Mr. Deaton is standing up, but you don't have a vote.
I agree with Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Oh, that's a dangerous thing to do.
Whatever the chair's pleasure. What are we voting on?
35A is now before us.
I ask.
Okay, if 35A is approved, I believe that is a substitute for 35, or is it an amendment?
No, it's just an amendment.
Excuse me, it's amendment. If it fails, it goes to committee.
Yes.
Okay? Here we go.
I ask for a no vote on 35A.
Open the roll on 35A, and tabulate the vote.
Three i's, seven no's.
Well, that was resounding. So that item goes to committee.
Right.
Ad hoc committee. Okay?
Now 35.
Now we have item number 35 before us.
That's a yes.
Does anyone wish to speak on item number 35?
Oh, no.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Nine i's, one no.
Okay, that item is approved. Next item.
Item number 45, called special by Councilmember Padilla. Motion is required.
Mr. Padilla, item number 45.
Yes, Mr. President. Call special for the purposes of moving both A and B on item 45.
There's a motion. Any councilmember that wish to speak? Say none. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Ten i's.
Okay. Without objection, we're going to send 35 forth with. Okay, seeing no objections, so ordered on that. Next item, Mr. Deaton. so ordered on that. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 47, called special by Councilmember Subornich for an amendment.
Councilman Subornich is a little busy right now, but I believe there's just a technical amendment on the desk.
Those are the ones-
Trust him, it's righteous.
Forthwith on item 35, please.
Did it.
Ah!
With that said, Councilwoman Walters says you better all read it. Yeah. Is there any objection, excuse me, to amendment item 47? I believe it's 47A. Substitute motion. Okay, we have item number 47A, substitute motion before us. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll and tabulate the vote?
Ten i's.
That item is approved, forthwith. Next.
Also on the desk now are the closed session items. Do you wish to hear public comment?
Yeah, why don't we do public comment real quick? I need to also caution my colleagues that we are down to a minimum quorum. There are only 10 members here. Richard Robinson under public comment? I do not see him. Okay, so the public comment period is closed. Next item, Mr. Clerk. Why don't we take here the housekeeping first before we go-
Motion for posting in referral.
Without objection, so ordered.
Councilmember's request to be excused from council attendance. Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on February 27th to leave at 11:30. It meets policy for city business.
Okay, without objection, so ordered.
Councilmember Chick requests to be excused on Wednesday, February 21st, and Wednesday, March 7th to arrive at 10:30 and leave at 11:30. Meets policy for city business.
Without objection, so ordered.
Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused on February 23rd to leave at noon. A motion is required for-
Now, that's a different story. Councilwoman Misakowski moves, without objection, so ordered.
Mr. President, is that in violation of the council rules?
And Councilmember Fuhr requests to be excused on March 23rd to leave at noon. Meets policy for personal business.
Without objection, so ordered.
And the final one, Councilmember Holden requests to be excused for illness from today's council session.
Without objection, so ordered.
The desk is clear, so for the closed session items.
Okay. Sergeants, would you please help us secure the room for executive session? All persons present who need to be excused. If you would please excuse yourselves, that would be appreciated. We are now going into closed session. We'll be back.
settlement of case.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Ten i's.
That item is approved. Next.
Item number 32C, settlement in Scott versus City case. Authorized City Attorney to expend $700,000.
Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Ten i's.
That item is approved.
32D, settlement in Wethington versus City. Authorized City Attorney to expend $300,000 in settlement of case.
Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Ten i's.
That item is approved.
And 32E, settlement in Zant versus City. Authorized City Attorney to expend $210,000 in settlement of case.
Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on this item and tabulate the vote?
Ten i's.
That item is approved.
The desk is clear.
Okay. Are there adjourning motions, council members? There are. Would everyone please rise for adjourning motions? The chair recognizes Councilman Bernson for an adjourning motion.
Yes, members of the council, we had the passing of one of the jazz greats in J.J. Johnson, who passed away, and I think was noted in today's papers. J.J. Johnson was one of the, probably if not the greatest, but certainly one of the greatest all-time trombone players. He performed with the jazz greats, Charlie Parker, Dizzy Gillespie, and many, many others. And I would ask that we adjourn his memory.
Other adjourning motions? Councilwoman Misakowski?
I'd like to ask the council to adjourn in the memory of James Del Gercio. Jim was a retired attorney who had a short battle with cancer, but he died at the age of 68. He'd been a strong father to his three children, had supported his wife, who was a longtime member, Patty, of the Tarzana Property Owners Association, a longtime board member. Jim, in retirement, was able to enjoy golf and gardening and the company and love of his family, and also his, his brothers. He is survived by his wife Patty, his son and two daughters, his mother, and his two brothers.
Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, request that we adjourn in memory of Antonio Ramirez Cruz, 48-year-old resident of Panorama City in my district, who was unfortunately a victim of a random act of violence over the course of the last week. And he was washing his car, had a public car wash, where he was assaulted and shot by three people who were taken into custody soon after the incident. But assault weapons were used in the course of the crime. He was the oldest of 10 brothers and sisters, and his family also lives in the district in the Pacoima area, and he will be sorely missed. He's also the oldest brother of Jesse Cruz, who's a member of our Bureau of Sanitation and is one of the leaders in the West Los Angeles area for the department.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, at the request of Mr. Holden, I ask that we adjourn in memory of George Thomas Perry, who worked as a skycap for American Airlines for 44 years. He was an active member of the 100 Black Men and a volunteer organizer for Councilman Holden's annual turkey giveaway during the holidays. He lived in the city of Los Angeles for some 59 years. Graveside Services will be held on Friday, February 9, at the Rose Hill Cemetery, 11:00 a.m.
Thank you. Others, I would like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Robert G. Bob Rados, who passed away on February 1. He was born on August 9, 1922. Bob was a former commissioner for the City of Los Angeles, for the CRA, as well as the Harbor Commission, a longtime serving member of the Harbor Commission, appointee of the late Mayor Bradley. Bob was a very good friend, survived by a loving, loving family, including his wife, Marge. There are many times you hear the expression, "A perfect gentleman." Bob Rados was a perfect gentleman. I would like to ask, we adjourn in his memory. Call the roll. Seeing no further business, this council is adjourned. Have a good day.
Thank you.